Listen, gonna come in, um, you in the public works department on the, uh, you mentioned the softball fields and I know, um, there was a couple of tournaments, successful tournaments, you know, at Iver Park and down at Corners Park. Is there any, um, future plans for the baseball fields? I mean, uh, we got some baseball fields down there and I mean if, Corners Park is a moneymaker and, uh, we get them baseball fields up. And baseball is still big around here in South Arkansas, just like softball and, I mean, do we have any future plans in, you know, trying to get those, uh, few baseball fields that we have up? That way, some people might want to throw some tournaments, you know?
I've had about, uh, last year maybe fifty kids or parents and families interested in coming down for baseball, not softball or baseball. It's my understanding, we have, and I had seen, a non-compete clause with the boys' club. I had, uh, a couple of groups say, well, can you just rent us the fields and you have no association with it? Let the parents run it, but they still will be competing against the boys' club. The boys' club numbers now are already bad. They're going down to different communities around the play. So, I don't know if legally, we can actually do a baseball league. I don't know what the agreement was, we let the, when the boys' club took it, I have no idea.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, well, I think what I'm getting at is sort of like, just say the softball people that did the softball tournaments. They come to you or City Hall and say, I wanna rent the fields to, to, to host a tournament. If, if whoever got a traveling team and they wanna come to you and say, hey, we wanna rent the fields, we got teams coming, we wanna put on a tournament. So is that, that's going against the boys' club or?
No.
Can't do that?
It would depend on the time, correct. So, so, so the, the Corners Park Commission originally owned the fields. They were leased to the boys' club long-term and then they were returned to the city, uh, I don't know, five or six years ago. And when they were returned to the city, that was the agreement, that the city would not operate it, uh, in competition with the boys' club. So, we're allowed to do certain things, so it might be a different season, but if it's in direct competition, uh, then that would violate that agreement. And so, and the, the deal was, they were not, initially keeping up the deals. They didn't wanna give us back the fields, they didn't wanna give us back, give us back the fields if we were gonna compete with the boys' club. But they really didn't wanna continue to make money. So they gave us back the fields, city agreed not to, uh, compete directly with the boys' club.
Couple of questions, um, so, that tells me, I mean, boys' club, they, they play baseball in the summer. So, it's a lot of people play fall ball. I officiate fall ball. Uh, second question, is the boys' club still the boys' club?
No.
It's, um, it's, it's not the boys' club anymore, is it?
It is not.
So, that should be thrown out, right?
Well, uh, no, it's like when you got something now, you got an agreement with somebody and they change names, agreement's still in place.
Well, I mean, the, 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 the boys' club was under the umbrella of the, the National Boys Club.
Long run of that, that's correct.
That's, that's what I'm saying, and, and now is, what is the?
Recreation.
It's the recreational thing. And so, the recreational thing picked up this agreement that the city had with the boys' club.
That would be worth looking at, but I would say yes. I mean, I know they have changed names, but normally the agreement is gonna go to the successor, so you have an agreement and there's a change in the business name, new people still take, I mean, it's still the same deal.
I would say from my past years' experience with that, you just agreed to be a member of the Boys Clubs of America, so that you paying them a fee to use their name and once you can't afford to pay their fee anymore, you're still the Boys and Girls Club of Washita County. You just don't have the.
I think this one has changed name.
Yeah, they, they have to get out of that, but, yeah. And I, I, I don't wanna stir the pot, I was just, I'm talking about trying to help, you know, bring some revenue to the city with those fields that we have at Corners Park.
So, so there's two parts to it. One would be whether or not the city wanted to say is that entity still subject to the agreement. The second part is just there's lots to do with the fields down there without violating the agreement, or certainly the spirit and intent. Because the spirit was not direct competition. So you say, uh, fall ball, that's why we were doing softball, there's all kinds of other things you could do. But if it was having a baseball league in the same season where it was okay in the newspaper, uh, here and in the Camden News, sign up for baseball, you can just sign up at the Corners Park with the City League, or you can sign up down there at, at the rec center, I would say, that, that's gonna be violating.
Okay, two different things. I'm just talking about hosting tournaments. I'm, I'm not talking about the, the, the city of Camden and come up to the mayor's office and sign up for baseball. You know, I mean, people just wanna, wanna place to play ball and host tournaments. And, and, and that can be revenue on those fields down there, if we fix it up. That's all I'm saying, not trying to put the boys' club or whatever the name is out, out there and stop them from what they doing.
So it is legal for an entity that wanted to do it, it's just not, we get, we just can't, uh, run it, right?
No, we're, we're, well, I would say, I, I'm going to advise against us doing anything that is trying to abuse a, a subterfuge or a way of violating an agreement with us, saying it's not a, I mean, we, we got the property back and the agreement we made at the time was we would not use it in competition. Now, I, all I have, no, that's just great, there's lots to do where it's not in direct competition. But I don't think the solution is to say, we're going to rent it to person A and then person A is gonna do something that's in competition. I mean, that's just staying, like, that's, 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 that's not, that would not be, be a, do a mayor would not be able to.
We were in, we went in and, and had a meeting and we were almost at a place where they were going to give it to the city. And something happened and they walked, and everybody walked away and we don't know what it was. Uh, but it got out that we were trying to, to, to make an agreement to do it. My first year, we sat right there and met several times trying to get some things for, some activities for young people and they walked away, so we tried it.
You, you mentioned revenue and I'll make it really short. Uh, me and Mr. Dawson had a couple of meetings, maybe two years ago, about the same thing. Right now, there is a original softball tournament every year in Step Guard. It brings about three million dollars to Step Guard. Tournament lasts about a week or so. If we were able to get fields here, the head of that organization would bring it here to us. If we were able to get the fields to do it. Um, and again, it's a week-long tournament and people love softball and baseball. And the head of that organization is from here in Camden and he is willing to bring it home if we can get the fields to play. And again, that's three million pretty much every year to Step Guard for the same thing we could do there.
And when we have done well, we have, I'm sorry, when we've done well, we played Corners and Iver at the same time and people went back and forth. And we've had some good success, but it had nothing, the city just kept the parks up, kept it right, kept everything going. And they, we paid, we paid for overtime and all that to keep people with something to do. But it would be so much more revenue with organization, I'm sorry, yes sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't want to interrupt you. So, uh, between Corners Park and, and the other parks that we have in the city, could, do we have enough fields to do that without involving the recreation center?
Uh, we, we would have about four fields between the two fields. We could have four really nice fields. Now, again, that would take away from them. Because the same lease they wanna bring here is part of the boys' club, but the guy does not wanna deal with the boys' club.
Yes, sir.
That's a whole conversation for me. We were a part of that agreement at, at Plan B C. So that's why we started that football team. We couldn't start a baseball team. Had no problem with it, that was what Mr. Claybaker told me at the time, we couldn't do it. So we agreed. Now, I thought there was a sunset clause on that, but evidently there is not.
I think that's a separate, the one, I thought it was pretty recent.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that.
Right, and I would have to go back and look at it and, and, and to see what's in competition. But, but I mean, in general, it was competition, but whether or not that's the, uh, softball tournament, whether or not it's specific, uh, sport would, would violate that, I, I don't know, so I'd have to go back and look at that. But I mean, this is, this is more recent than when you were doing the football.
Okay. I checked into it and, and I was told that, I was told that there was, there wasn't any reason why anybody in the city could. The city is not in business to make money. We are in, we in business to provide services. But there is nothing wrong with the services that we have providing revenue. Of course, our companies provide, everything we do provide revenue. That was my understanding, that's why I didn't understand how to conclude it so much with an agreement that, you know, we, we bought that field back. You know, and then the cat out of the bag, everybody should have known, we had bought it back.
Are you talking about Corners Park?
Corners Park.
Okay.
And that's what I understand, that is being public property, being city public property.
Because it was a long-term lease of ninety-nine years left. And so, that ninety-nine-year lease was surrendered back to the city. We didn't buy it, we purchased, we, we bought it out of the lease, that's what happened. Long, the Corners Park Commission, long-term lease from the boys' club. Boys' club had seventy-eight years left, they surrendered it back to the city, so that lease agreement was terminated.
And, and the only, only thing I can measure by was the lease that we did. Uh, when we went into that building, it was, it was a mess, it was torn out. We had put our own funding into it, I don't take anything from the city. And we had to rebuild that building and supply up everything we needed. And if at any time this boys besides the tournament, the lease we got, it's just it. I gotta leave everything there, everything else, everything we take.
I got a question, and I'm gonna get off of this, but I wanna get back to the question at hand. And Ms. Brown don't kick me for this, but if Juneteenth, it's a wonderful celebration, if Juneteenth wants to, and all the festivities that they do, if they wanna have a softball and a baseball tournament, can they do it?
I, I think it really is, is can they do it at the Corners Park, and I can't, I can't answer that.
Well, we already do softball tournaments on a regular basis now.
It's the baseball.
It's the baseball.
So we just can't, we.
They don't offer softball to grown people.
Yeah, so we just can't play baseball on the fields down there that we get.
On, on that, at that one location, in direct competition, at the same season. Not, not fall ball, that doesn't apply, tournament may not apply, but not by a league, if it's, if it's offering the same service that is offered at, at the boys' club, that, that's when you can't be in competition.
Yes, sir.
So, to be clear, if adults wanted to play baseball down there in an organized fashion,
Just, right.
that would be acceptable?
And, and that was the, right, and that's, that's what I said, there's language in there, I don't have it in front of us tonight, but it's not, we can't use, we can't use that field, it's not that we can't use the park. It was, it was in direct competition with what services the boys' club offers, that's correct. So, yeah, adult, adult ball, fall ball, softball, uh, different seasons, different things, all of those can still be there.
But they can use the fields to practice, right?
Yep, that's not in competition. And I think there's a question, we can go back and, right, I mean, I mean, the question is whether or not you are taking away revenues from another social, uh, entity in town. So, so I mean, I mean, if they're offering, if they're selling the Dallas snow cone, you can't be selling the same thing at the gym. That's, that's the question, so, so I don't know about the, I would say practice, I don't think, that, that's a question. The question is, are we offering the same service? So that's gonna take you on back to say, what's the same service, what are they offering, what, what are we trying to do? And the main, uh, focus of it, I would say, is, is to not have a, not have a citywide youth baseball program in this spring. That, that, that's, that's, that's the general, uh, sense of it.
Question, um, for, what about Iver Park, could you do a baseball?
Correct, there is, there is nothing on Iver Park. No, no restriction, that's right, it's just, it's just located. That, that's right, that's right.
All right. I'll ask you one question.
Sure.
So, how do you define competition? I mean, the thing of it is, if it's already on paper, the definition of competition should state, okay, uh, Alex K X Y Z or K, you know what I'm saying? So you, when you say competition, it should be some kind of stipulations or some kind of identification of what competition is.
Sure, sure. And, and we could look at that, that's right, that's what I'm saying, so, so we can look at, is this, is, is what we wanna do in direct competition? We can look at that. I'm saying there is a restriction out there that in general is preventing a youth baseball spring season where you sign your kids, that, that's, that's, that, that I can say for sure.
Yeah, I, I.
The rest of it would have to be a case-by-case analysis, so is this in direct competition?
I, I get it, I mean, you answered the question and I mean, we're not, the boys' club is taking signups, not the city of Camden. But what I'm getting, we can't play baseball during the same time that they playing baseball. At Corners Park.
And I may, and I may, I may have given the wrong impression, I don't think that's necessarily the case. I, I think, I think what, uh, I think what we're saying, uh, and our, our point is asking, you gotta look at cases by cases. I'm saying we can't have a straight, citywide, youth baseball spring season with uniform, you're signing kids up for, that to me would be, that's in competition, yeah.
No.
The rest of it, okay, you, you've got a slope of softball, fall ball, adult league, practice, tournaments, that, that's gotta be looked at in the video, so.
I, I was just saying, if, if, if Joe Blow and, and, and Waldo wanna come to Camden and throw a baseball tournament and invite teams from different places and, and have a tournament that weekend, that, that's what I'm saying, and bring revenue to the city. I'm not talking about come up to City Hall and sign kids up for baseball. Yeah.
I, I, I don't think we can answer that, I think it would, if somebody just played on the field, the fields are open, yes, they can be used. If you're saying we can compete, there's a tournament coming and it is the, uh, Southwest Original Baseball Team wants to come to have a tournament. And the boys' club, or the rec center says, we want y'all to come here at the Fairview Park. And Camden says, we want you to come to Corners Park, that to me is in direct competition.
Can I inject something? I said, I think what it boils down to is you've got to get the document and look at the language. And so until we do that, we're just beating our head against the wall.
And, and see what it'd be, what we're trying, we're trying to do. You're saying we wanna add someone to come play, uh, practice, that's one thing. If you're saying we wanna have a tournament, that's different. We wanna do fall ball, we wanna do softball, we've gotta decide on what activity are we trying to do and then make a determination of whether or not that would be in competition.
Thank you, and thank you so much. Were there any more questions of me? Well, at this time, the, we moved to old business. Resolution number zero-two-twenty-two presented by the, introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number two-twenty-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Camden, Arkansas to state the primary intended uses of portioning the first tranche of the city's allotment of local fiscal recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act and for other purposes.
Is there a motion to approve? Have to make the motion to approve? Is there a second?
I think I'll second it so we can discuss it.
Ready for discussion?
Um, I don't know that we've given this as, as much full discussion. We've had that one nice meeting that we threw out some ideas, but I don't know that I've got a full, uh, assessment of where this is gonna go. And I don't think it's, if we're in this bigger rush to have, to, to pass it now, I guess is what I'd say. Uh, there may be other ideas that ought to be put into this, get some more thought input from, from other folks.
This is the first chance, there's a second upcoming, and all of the things that we wanted to do with the first one are itemized in this particular.
Yeah.
Oh, you.
What, but what might be leaving out that we might need if there was some, there again, I'd like to think, say, okay, uh, the one I mentioned the other night was the Corners Park booth. Now, we hadn't got a clue as to what it's gonna take, uh, to do that. Uh, and I hate to be putting some monies into a couple of these things, I'm trying to think, we might be better put into the booth. Uh, so, uh, I'm, anyway, I ju, I don't know, none of these things are on an emergency deal, I don't think. Now, number three, upholding the police infrastructure. Uh, I know there's some negotiating going on around that, for, for that thing, uh, that needs to be addressed. So I would say strike number three, uh, un, until we get a better, uh, a revised package from this thing. Because he's looking at putting in LED lights that can be put in for nearly nothing, I'll say nearly nothing. And that's gonna reduce the size of that generator by some magnitude, then we'll probably have a better idea of what that might save than, than that would.
So, so do we have to spell out every penny of it in the revolution of what we're gonna do?
No, and, and, and for most of these items, they will come back before the council. And so there are still other requirements, uh, if it's less than thirty-five thousand dollars. And the mayor can make that purchase or, uh, make that purchase with just, just getting too close, they not seal a bid with any too close. Uh, if, if it is more than that amount, we're still gonna have to do competitive bidding, so that's still required. And if we're using, uh, these federal funds, the competitive bidding is, is more stringent in that we gotta be sure that we, uh, notify potential bidders of the federal requirements, uh, we've got to be sure that we're trying to get minority businesses to bid on it. We've got to at least get two bids on it, okay, so, whereas on a normal competitive bidding, you may only get one bid in. You get one, you advertise for a pickup truck, you get one bid in, that's satisfactory. In using the federal funds, if you only get one bid in, you've gotta go back and redo your bid because you gotta widen the scope in order to get at least two bids. So, so anything we spend out here is gonna have stricter requirements, uh, at, at least if you get over thirty-five thousand dollars. Now, if you had some repairs that would be less, that those would be available to spend on getting too close, the mayor can do that, that coming back. But the other things are, are in the placeholder, to say, here's how much we plan, this is what we plan on, we're not, we're not making a purchase on any of these. I mean, that, that purchase has to still come back, to say, we've gone through the bidding process, uh, we received these bids, here's a lot of bids, so that's still gotta come back.
Any more discussion?
Well, I, I can just throw my little piece in here. I was like L E and I thought we had a good discussion. Uh, I didn't think it blocked the stones as far as I was concerned, because I saw some uses that we could do within the city, uh, that could use a little money.
And what are they, sir?
Pooh, number one, you know, my number one product. Uh, I didn't have a problem with, uh, some of the expenditures. Uh, one of the other things I wanted to ask, and I didn't wanna hold the fire chief up, is that information you were supposed to get as far as us trying to fast track. Change that price?
Yes.
Okay, so we okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, okay, uh, of course that's a.
And that's one.
I'm trying to think, doesn't that come out, we've got a different, uh, purchase order on that coming up later, the thing that he's piggybacked the truck or the, the air packs onto the truck thing, and does that work?
It is not, it is not coming out of the federal funds. It is not coming out of the federal funds.
Not.
It is not.
Now, the other one was, uh, I wanted a little clarity on the software.
Number one? Number six.
Yes. Some of, some of the things that we discussed at the beginning that, that I could understand for some, that I, I just thought it was a, I don't know, I hate to hurt feelings, but I just thought it was a little bit too convenient. And, and I could take forty-nine thousand dollars, do a lot with it. And then, just, just as a one vote over here now. But I, 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 I needed to put a little emphasis on some of the infrastructure and the things that we got here in the city. Where we survive, one I looked at was the condition of this building. I've talked to a lot of people. If we don't do nothing, something about this building was just as best, we're gonna be in serious trouble. So I just saw, from my point of view, a need in some other areas that we didn't prioritize when we sat down at that table instead of get ready to spend all this money.
So, would, would it be a good suggestion to table this and go back to the drawing board? I mean, what?
Well, my, my concern is that is this gonna affect what we wanna do in here versus the thing that, see, this is a line item thing. Is it gonna affect the other things that we know we need to do and we wanted?
Yes.
Well, I was gonna make the motion to do two things, to, to amend what we have here. I was gonna strike number three, which is the police department thing. And I was gonna strike number six, I just don't see that software stuff as being a necessary expenditure. I'm, I'm for putting this money into hard infrastructure, that's not lasting so long. I don't see the software being part of it. That may be something we wanna spend out of funds at some point, uh, out, out of the money we're gonna be saving in our regular operating, but we can argue about that separately, that's not infrastructure money to me. I would like to see the water and sewer go ahead and get the go-ahead to pursue their tank thing, so they can get on with that.
Okay with that.
And, uh, so, if my motion is that we strike number three and number six and then go ahead and, and pass the rest of it.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Would you, would you second on that first?
I'll say. Yes, sir.
Is number seven not directly related to number six?
We would, well, he would just be adjusting, right, that's a five point five percent, we would just adjust that amount.
It's something that's mandated as a percentage in whatever you're doing, there's an overhead factor built in.
Government's kickback money.
So we striking number, number three and six?
Yes.
Uh, I think that's what the strike.
That's motion and a second, is that a discussion on striking three and six?
Uh, question?
Yes, sir.
Was that, did he make an amendment or is that amendment to the motion or this is a?
I, I meant that we, uh, my motion was to amend this ordinance or this resolution to strike number three and number six.
Okay.
All right, that's it. Any more discussion on the amendment? No more discussion, then we now vote on amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
And we wanna use show of hands or?
Voice vote, either one.
All right, let's do show of hands. Those in favor, let's lift their hands, all right? House have it? All right, now we need to vote on the motion to approve, is that right or? Mentioned it too, that's amended.
I guess we'd ask for a motion, uh, we need one more motion to.
Accept as amended?
Accept.
Make the motion that we approved twenty-two-twenty-two as amended.
Well, I was gonna say we need to amend section seven.
It's, well, it says five point five of the cost not to exceed, so it's like it corrects itself to me.
Yeah, not to exceed, I guess for an estimated total, I would think we're still gonna correct. But we only take out three and six.
Mm-hmm, so that's two hundred and seventy thousand, I think. So we should reduce it by, my, got those, we'd fourteen thousand eight fifty.
Right.
Thirty-four six fifty, so, that's it?
I think that's right. So what? Thirty-four six fifty is what I think. So I'll make the motion that we amend section seven to be thirty-four thousand six hundred and fifty instead of, instead of forty-nine thousand five hundred.
I'll say.
Moving second, any discussion? Move show of hands, those in favor, just voting in the side of aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it again. Now we need a motion to?
Make the motion to pass number two twenty-two as amended and re-amended.
Okay, okay.
Moving second, any discussion? Well, now those in favor, just voting in the side of aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, just voting in the side of nay? Ayes have it. Resolution two twenty-two passes as amended. Ordinance number zero one twenty-two, who will, uh, introduce it? Introduce by Argud.
Ordinance number one twenty-two and ordinance amending ordinance six twenty-one authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal contract with Watford Purchasing, declaring that an exceptional situation exists, waiving the requirement for competitive bidding, authorizing the mayor to purchase a new bumper truck and associated equipment for the city and Camden Fire Department, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Is then? Motion to, was that to suspend the rules or move your motion? All right, motion to suspend, is there a second? I second. It's been moved and probably second for discussion. I got in a, a little bit of trouble last time for emerg, using the emergency clause. Would you have a good cause for the emergency clause on this one? This is a good cause? All right, make sure I'm okay. All right, and, uh, all right, roll call.
Don't get to discuss.
It's discussion.
Discussion, okay. Well, that's what I, okay, go ahead.
And he had something.
Okay.
I was curious of, now, this is the truck that we agreed to last year and paid the five hundred thousands in advance.
That's right.
Uh, now, we're modifying this for the twenty-six air packs that you were presenting last week. And that was, I, I think it was over two hundred thousand dollars or something that you were.
Two hundred and thirty thousand sixty dollars.
Yeah, true. So, so where we want to use that for out of the rescue funds that we discussed, that's not gonna work?
You talking about out of that ARPA money?
Uh, yeah.
Went through it, did the background. I think it possibly technically could be, but it was enough gray area that.
You can't get too bad.
That it made more sense to keep it within the state and not federal money like we discussed. And to be able to hit the deadline on the time and attach it to the truck saves the twenty-four thousand dollars. Hit it on the deadline is another thirty thousand, so you're looking about fifty-four thousand dollar savings. And they are listed, went back, verified, talked to the salesman on it, but also physically went into HGAC, looked at and verified that they are listed in the bid process already. In HGAC, these products are listed in there. So they are there.
It had something, huh?
Yes, sir.
No, no, I, I was agreeing with him. It was, I knew it was something.
On the offer question, we have to have those money allocated by when?
I don't think it's until, what, twenty-four?
We, we have to spend it by twenty-four, but we need to say that.
We've got lots of time to allocate the money.
Okay.
We're not in a rush.
All right.
Well, okay, my question, other, I guess I come back to saying, the, the fire truck was in our budget, but this other two hundred and thirty thousand is not in our budget.
Amendment to the budget, yes, sir.
And it's not included here?
Not, excuse me, I'm not understanding that.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to think, do we have to amend the budget before we can authorize the purchase?
The two thirty wasn't originally in. I think, I, we've got enough getting the equipment fund, it was not gonna be used for this. For the.
Okay.
I thought we was gonna agree with the group because we needed to do it and we would look at that budget at some time and put that back through any other occasion like this.
Well, I'm just thinking from the auditor standpoint of you're gonna go to bid, saying you're supposed to have money in the budget before you go get a purchase order for it.
It's the, the fire truck fund, going out of the fire truck fund. And this is, you know, which hand is it? Is it in my left hand or in my right hand? We still got to it. And, and, and we understand that. But we're looking, before we get the truck paid for, it's gonna be, we're right now, as of the first of February, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in the negative on the truck fund. The truck fund receives approximately ten thousand five hundred dollars per month in there. By the time you go back to the original resolution, it takes half the, the sales tax and then the, the money that was being paid for a bond is put in there and you take outside fire contracts. It can go from ten five to maybe hit eleven or twelve, somewhere in there. So, that is knocking it down, paying off each month. If we put the two thirty in there with the truck fund, as stated, it's gonna put it down to about three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars down. And it's gonna take us a while to get our truck fund paid back. But we're gonna be sitting here with trucks in good shape. We're gonna be sitting here with air packs that we're good for fifteen years on. So it'll come right back around. We're paying ourselves instead of paying a bond. It's the way I understood the original resolution for even, you know, setting up the truck fund. So, on paper, it looks like we're just healed here, but we're just paying ourselves, if that makes sense. You probably expressed it that way.
I understand it coming out of that designated equipment fund. But I'm trying to think, it has to be in our operating budget.
The general fund first, yes, sir.
Before you're, I'm just looking here, there's nothing in there for anything like that. Like showing capital outlay eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we would have to amend the budget, I don't see how.
So do we have to do, my question, do we have to amend the budget before we authorize the first order? This section, I don't know.
I thought we were moving on the fact that he's gonna have to replace them anymore. And that's what caught my attention. We just, we was gonna look fifteen years, we was gonna lose them all in three years and we have to pay the same.
Right. It's the smart thing to do, it's just I'm gonna get the, the operational procedure of which one comes first. And don't want to make an illegal purchase order if we haven't amended the budget. That's what I'm trying to avoid and I, I'm not really sure what the rule is.
General fund is gonna have to pay for it, just like you pay for the truck. And then of course, we've had three hundred something thousand dollars in there in the truck fund. And knocked it back up, we only had a hundred and sixty-seven left to pay, which we still pay that so much each month on paper coming off. So it's, it's gonna, on paper, look bad, but still, which hand is it being?
We were gonna amend the budget.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because I'm there to do in this. I mean, I would do what to do in this and say, we meant that we're amending the budget in this.
And that's why I was just getting ready to look at, uh, is if we could add a line that says we are, help me with the wording, the, the account number should be fifty-nine four sixty. Account number fix. Pardon?
I have eighty now.
Well, no, that's a zero right now. I kinda don't want to mess with the, the, uh, let's see. I'll take that back, that was a different, that, that was public works line I looked at was the eighty. This one has, uh, only has thirty-two thousand in there for all those. It's a zero in there for capital outlay, what, twenty-three oh seven, isn't that your special equipment fund?
Yes, sir, that's public safety tax.
Yeah, so that's fifty-nine, we count hundred fifty-nine four sixty. And we need to increase that from zero to?
Two forty.
To?
Yeah, two hundred and two, let's make it two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Use a round number.
And that's the truck, that's the truck fund line?
Uh-uh, it's capital outlay twenty-three oh seven, twenty-three dash oh seven five, which is the, I'm gonna say that fire truck equipment fund.
Is one 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 zero zero.
Law, you got that off?
So my, my motion is to, on this ordinance, section four, add a?
Just then, uh, Mayor, I thought that we had a motion that Alvin Moore made to suspend the rules. Somebody seconded that was ever acted on. Or am I, am I wrong on that?
We did, we were in discussion, we were in discussion.
On, on that, so motion's still out there.
And, and he's right, I think, we were in discussion.
Right.
On amending the rules. But I rescind that for us to go ahead and amend the agenda, if you want to do that.
Well, you could rescind or you go ahead and vote on it. And I would say that's the last motion we have, the motion to suspend rules, isn't that right?
Yes.
That's what I mean, that'd be voted on before the amendment. It was still amended after.
Yeah, right.
Right. I'd say vote on that.
Roll call.
Argud?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
No, that one's missed, okay.
So, I would like to make a motion to amend under section four and add a line that says we are amending our twenty-twenty-two budget, Fire Department, line number or account number, I'm gonna call it account number fifty-nine four six O to, for, to add two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to accommodate the purchase of the, uh, air packs.
Second.
Moved and second, any more, it's in a discussion? All right, roll call.
McDonald?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Argud?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Now, we need a motion to accept as amended?
Vote to approve as amended.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Argud?
Yes.
Thank you. We're up to, uh, ordinance number zero two twenty-two. Who, who will introduce?
Oh, there it is.
Ordinance two twenty-two and ordinance of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, modifying the boundaries for the election of all women, approving for the redistricting of city wards and for other purposes.
Any motion to suspend?
I have a question about the ordinance or whatever, I guess, too. Number one.
Can we discuss it without the?
We. It's, it's been introduced, so I, so the ordinance has been introduced, so we can discuss it, right?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, question for Mr. Frye. If we pass these, I'm just curious, are, are you, can these be changed and amended?